Okay, we can get started. I just want to say, before we get into the town hall meeting, I just want, I just want everybody to take a moment of reflection for the tragedy that happened here today by the barber shop right there on South Trail. I'm not asking, well, we can pray for those that got hurt, but I just wanted to take a moment of reflection. So we can, hopefully, I know there may be some questions asked about that tonight, but we should at least give a moment of silence and respect to the families that were involved in this. The ones that did not have anything to do with it, but were directly involved after the fact. Thank you so much. Now, as everyone knows, the town hall meetings are impromptu, open discussion. I have a mic that's right there. That's a live mic. You can come up, address the congregation, talk to the people. It can go back and forth. I have no problem with that. I just have a couple of rules. No name-calling, no profanity. And we're not here to attack one another. We're here to discuss. Hopefully, we can try to, between one another, come up with answers, come up with solutions, and probably come up with ulterior motive, ulterior gathering ideas that we may have. We put our heads, our heads, our heads together. I think we can make this happen. There were a few things that we discussed at the last meeting. I'm not going to go over all of them, but there were some questions asked about the potholes. I mean, I think I answered that. The resurfacing, which is going to be, well, it's going to start real soon, right there off 200 and, right back to the library. That's about 217th Street, all the way from there to the South Trail. So there are signs out there right now. So those are some of the things that were asked about, about potholes. They're going to do that. They're going to actually resurface that. There's the lady here from Lincoln Metals that asked about the, she wanted to mow, is she here? Because I know I didn't give her to share the novak, and I just wanted to know how that worked out. There was also talk about some of the seed programs that are going on, and we had one of our residents, Yvante, talk about that. And basically, I have everything here, but you know, we're not, I'm not going to go over all that. What I want to do is spend time tonight talking about your concerns. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. I also want to thank Dr. Lee, Superintendent of School District 168, for using her ability. She's standing up there.
At our last meeting, there was some concern about the bus stops.
Yes.
And so what we have done this year is we have put our school personnel, will be the bus monitors now. And so we're hoping that that will curtail some of that bus stop issue. Previously, the bus monitors were employed by the bus company, so they didn't really know our kids. So now we're putting our own staff on the buses to school in the morning and home in the afternoon. So that hopefully will help. At least they'll be able to identify if it's our kids doing something they're not supposed to do, so that we can do something about it. But I just wanted to let you know the resolution from that last meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. What I want to start off tonight, I did have on the, we did talk about it last month, about our youth and their involvement here in the village. So I do have a young man that's here that would like to probably give you an outline of some of the things that he has encountered. He's been a resident out here twice. He left and came back. And I was hoping I would see more, more of the young, young men and women to come out. After he gives through talking, if anyone else would like to come up, especially the youth, and talk about some of the things that may be their concern. And then quite naturally, like I said before, this is informal, so anyone can, you know, come and talk. But first, I wanted to get Mr. Kevin. Come on up, sir. He's, I've known him for quite a while. You can come right this, the mic. And Kevin is, is one of our youth that has actually been involved in the village. He's, he's one that actually is, has worked with the village and worked with the residents.
Hi. My name is, my name is Kevin Posey. I've been a resident of South Village, Apana, Apana, but for the majority of, I want to say it's both 13 years. I moved here from Beaumont and went to, and actually graduated from Rookover. The big brown, the big brown sign, class of 2000, that was my class's gift. Which is, I still, I still think is cool, but it's still there. I graduated from Rookover and went on to Bloom Trail. And during, during that time, even after I graduated from Bloom Trail, I came back to serve with South Village. I was, I was a secretary of the Parks and Recreation Committee. I did a lot, I helped a lot, a lot of local campaigns, just giving young legs to the football campaign. And what I've, what I've done professionally, what I do for the living world is that I'm actually advancing acting culture. I, I, I teach acting, I teach acting at Long Island Middle School. I just did this over the summer. And I also teach at, teach in Chicago, at Inspiration Academy, and I also teach at different programs. One in Fort High, it's just been raining down. And I went to Purdue, I went to Purdue State and finished up at Illinois Department of Arts Academy, with a focus in both performance and actual state performance. And I'm 28, no kids, no, just one, just a man who's just focused on making sure that he makes, and leaves a mark on society and here. I'm the eldest of six, I'm the eldest of seven kids. So being the eldest of seven kids, and then being a teacher, and then being the youth leader at my church, I really do believe that there is, has to be something for the kids and for the world. I really do believe that there has to be more opportunities and programs that need to be developed. And that's what I currently do, to make sure that the lost, the quote-unquote "lost generation", so many people are giving up on. So many people will think that, okay, they can just give them math, reading, and science, and they should be fine. But then not giving them actual exercise and actual things to do outside of that, to take advantage of that physical energy that they use to do vital things. That's what I do, to provide and show different things, and show them different ways that they can use their talents and gifts and energies. And that's what, and that's what I do. I'm a, I'm a passion, I grew up in South Village. I, I mean, although I've moved around, moved around a lot in my life, I really do consider South Village my home because so much of my time has been here. I've walked up and down every street, every avenue, every boulevard in South Village. And though there has been a decline in neighborly goodness, and there's been decline in just wanting to speak to our neighbor and being nice and kind to them, I do not give up on South Village good. I do not give up on anyone a single good. I believe there's goodness in every single person I meet, that that's been the best, and being brought forward and so like that. That's why, and I don't believe in bad kids. I believe in bad behaviors at bad times. And if we really, and I believe if we as a people, as South Village residents, as people, and if we continue to develop programs, to develop things for our kids and for them, for the betterment of South Village, for the betterment of our future and our culture, there's not a single one that we haven't got wrong. So I don't know if I have expanded on more direct help with that, but you too. I pray everyone will bless and, and believe.
Thank you, Kevin. Now, now, also, I, I wanted to hear from some of the other young adults. Is there any other young adult that might come up? And don't be shy. Say what you want to say. If you have concerns, by all means, come up and address them. Does any other, other young adult have anything you have something to say? Okay. Okay. Young, okay. Anyone, the mouse? You're younger than me. Okay. Anyone that wants to start? Now, we can start with the question-and-asking period, or we can start with just talking, you can come around the mic. So, come on, sir. Yes?
It's on, it's on, it's, this is Kevin though.
Okay.
Who am I, a professional? No, actually, I'm a comedian. I just wanted to add, what was her name again? Kevin.
Yes.
I was born and raised in South Village. Still the same house my parents live in. They had issues about youth programming when I was young, and they knew that, because there was nothing for us. And we continue to do not great things. We live in a different society now, and I think you're completely right. And I just wanted to add on to that, because I also am a comedian, director, I do my native stuff. And I've been doing this throughout the city. I get hired on, Northeastern has been working with Cicero, Berwin, Austin, some of the really violent areas. Buildings change, and thank God. But that, this is where we need to start, you know? Because I have to tell you, you know, I travel, I look at my Facebook, I'm in and out of town, but I always have to come back in and check on my parents. Every time I come, everybody wants to complain about these kids, but there's nothing for them to do. There's nothing for them to do. So what else are you going to do? Get in trouble. And it's a little more of a violent world, so they do that. So I just had, you know, a couple of ideas I'm just going to throw out there, which goes into the water segment, but like I said, I do my native stuff. And this is not water, man. How do I be in South? And you guys already know, you know this, that natives are interested. Look at the Ho-Chucks. They wanted that casino window, and anyone said no. So it's kind of, as in my, the whole thing that I wanted to say, because Jackie was talking about coming, and I'm like, yeah, I'm coming. Today, I'm coming, especially after that shooting. Because I work with kids with that all the time. We have resources, but we got to start to learn how to use them. You know what I'm saying? Like, there's, the Puritan Potter Bottoming, their, their Potter Bottoming, there's seven fires. I'm sure some of you guys have been to their casinos. There's the Four Winds. There's the one up there in Washington. This is their tribal land. So that, and I'm saying, I'm not just coming up here saying, oh, we need these programs. But I'm sure if you approach these, if the village approached these tribes, because they're trying to get land, they're trying to show a presence, you probably get some funding. They have a lot of money, they have a lot of casinos, and they're all about youth. So, you know, that, that is definitely, because you're going to sit there, oh, we're not going to put this money for it, because that's everybody's, you know, that's our excuse. I get it, because I'm a teaching artist. I, you know, I make money while I work with youth. But we have to give them different options, you know? Or at least have a youth council or something, like maybe some with Kevin or something like that, to start popping about all that thing. Because, you know, you can go forever about this, with profitability, this, that, and another. But you know what? Why not? You might have to change the, the headrest, you know, because I've always been offended by it, but I'm not going to go to big deal. If you're going to work with tribes, you might have to use that, but that's the whole reason we have that. You know what I'm saying? Not just because it's been there. But that's not, because one thing, you have to have, you think to the youth, you have to have money. You have to have money, and you have to have culture. Couple, I just want to talk about the last thing I, I project I just finished a couple of weeks ago, was through Northeastern, Illinois University. It was for the youth in Austin, the Austin neighborhood, where there's a lot of shootings. These kids have to dodge bullets every day. So what we did is, because they're predominantly African-American, they bring in mostly African artists, or African slash contemporary artists. One was West African hip-hop dancer. Another one was an Afro-Colombian, Afro-Colombian drumming. Another one was Venezuelan artist, and then me, I did more Native perspective, co-creation, helping them develop their stories, their stories. Not, they don't need to hear our stories, they need to create their own stories and have ownership. And I, you know, this was the toughest group I've ever worked with, to tell you the truth. I was kind of like, oh, how am I going to deal with them? You know, like, these kids have to dodge bullets. And I had a lot of my administration not having to talk about the different things these kids had to deal with. Oh, how real can you get with that? You better get really real, you know? Like, I was, I graduated from school, and there was a death, you know, where the girl got murdered, maybe 100 miles from here, right, this little creek? We have a problem. We have a problem. There's just a shooting over there, and it's probably youth-based. We have a problem, so we got to do something about that. So with this youth that I worked with, I was like, oh, at first I weren't paying attention, but just like being real with them? Hopefully, I can show you guys a YouTube link. What we hope co-create between all of us, artists and youth. I just thought everybody crying, because it's in their heart. It's in their heart, and they have to do something, you know? Like, what do you do after school, kid? Is there something that's provided for you? I didn't know that, because I'm not around here, but I don't see anything. Do they even use the community center anymore? What do they provide?
There are programs up there, at school every day.
What types?
There are programs, there are programs that are provided every day. We have basketball programs. They, I think, they're talking about cheerleading, and there are games, there are games that they have. Now, what you were talking about, having youth council, that's a good idea. To have a youth council, but we need, the problem with a lot of programs, we need volunteers to help run those programs. We don't have the money to subsidize that. When we get the volunteers, I'm pretty sure we can get the people to come out. There was a program that was here over the summer, and it lasted from 9:01 to 6:00, but they didn't have enough. Shaff, Shaff was there, so therefore, the program was kind of in and out. In all programs, what we need, and that's one of the things we need to talk about, is get people to come out and help with that. To volunteer their time. We can get a list going, to volunteer their time for this time, for that time, for that particular program. That's how they work. That's how all programs work, because you cannot fund them. But there is a need for youth council.
We got to start looking for that funding.
Pardon me?
We got to start looking for that funding.
Yes, we do. And with your Ho-Chuck, now, Ho-Chuck, you know, has a facility there in Illinois, right?
Yes.
They do have, I think it's soccer, I don't know if it's, there's another sport that's played in that, in that large arena. Then they should, quite naturally, have Maygo and things like that. But now, as far as the casino was concerned, yes, I don't know where you got that, and then what didn't want to conceal it.
No, they made one of them, went against it. I talked to the Ho-Chuck Nation.
Yeah.
They all voted against it, but like, why?
They voted against it.
They had strip club. I don't understand that.
You said they voted against it, yeah?
Yes, Linwood, Linwood voted against it. But that point I'm getting at is not about just, oh, there's things like that. I want to, I'm piggybacking off Kevin. You know, one of my biggest things I say to my students, Elwyn Stein, he's supposed to be one of the smartest men ever lived. He said imagination is more important than knowledge. Now, why would he say that? I talk to my students, and after they bring it up, they say, to make something up is imagination. Right? Do you agree with that? Okay? And knowledge is what they teach. So what the smartest men in the world say is imagination is more important than knowledge. But then our, our programs are getting fined, are getting cut. And the reason I say imagination is more important than knowledge is because if you can't imagine it, there's no way we can education to get there if you can't imagine first. So we got to get more cultural programs. But that also brings back to one question I was saying, is, we all know, I haven't been here for a while, I sit back and forth, come and take care of my parents. But, you know, we have a big population, with the mayor, the lady, and all that other stuff. But we have not increased the bus service. We have not increased that whatsoever. It doesn't run on Sunday, it's only for 10 hours, like 12 hours a day. And then, you don't have youth, and there's no jobs. So we can talk about everything in the world, and how we can do solutions, but we need to get places here to get us jobs, so that then we can have buses and everything else. Because no one's paying attention to the population, you know? Okay? And those are serious things. And those are your bus stops. But maybe, I have 10 million things, but this will be the last one, is the pace. They said dead zones in Naperville? Oh, Naperville only needs buses. We need those buses. And on the news, we're speaking up, and now we're all over the news for the shooting today. But not barely with the contaminated water, barely with this, barely with another thing. But I just think those are the concerns that really are like on my heart. I could talk to you all day, no, I definitely don't. I'm not going to ask you about the Puritan Potter Bottoming. The Puritan, that was the national people in the Chicagoland area. But the Potter Bottoming, there are seven different tribes, they have so much money. They just wait for people to talk to them with the push of it. You have it, you bring them an offer, you never know, you might have a check in the laundry room too. Say, God, come on. I'm telling you the resource. So I'm not simply just telling you things you need to do without giving you resources. So I think that's a very important point.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to let you know that. I just wanted to let you know, you do have people that are in the audience right now, but you're not talking on dead ears, that you have to superintendent, you have the mayor there, and now, you know, you have someone who trusts me that I hear. So I've been looking and listening to that. But I do know firsthand, when you start dealing with the, with the Ho-Chuck and with the Native American society, there are certain stipulations that they, they get wanting to have too. So it's not, it's more, it's not kind of dry like that, so I'm sure there's some.
It's not quite dry like that, but there are also, their benefit would be, then to actually have such another tribal land. So you got to see, there's always an energy exchange. There's always going to be an energy exchange. What's it for them? Well, maybe you do something, Potter Bottoming on the village thing, or something like that. Because there's so much land that they can help invest in. These houses are going for dirt cheap.
Right.
You got to give it a break. So negativity, you know, saying, I, I'm, I'm always co-creating. Maybe the possibility, I think that is, it can happen. Because it's not that long a process. I know friends that give money to organizations like that, if they see cause for it.
Great.
You've got to articulate yourself when you're sitting there presenting it to them.
Absolutely. That's a quick thing. I appreciate that, and go wherever, everybody follow up on that. Anytime there's money. That's okay. Is anyone next? Anyone who would like? Yes, sir, come on up.
You know, this, this might be a little bit off of contract. But I'm a long-term resident of South Village. My current residence is 60, 700 over the morning, you guys wait. I own a house here in South Village in 1973. I have dealings with the Hanks family. If anybody knows my name, it's Paul P. We had dealings with one dad type with the Hanks family. This is an armed church.
Sir, sir, I, I understand, but please, when, when.
I, I understand.
When I, okay.
And we've done things in the village for years and years and years. And I, I understand, you don't have to do programs to change. Two weeks ago, my house was broke into, here in South Village. A nine-millimeter handgun with 60-mile capacity is out on the street. The police did not answer the call for 20 minutes. 20 minutes after the alarm call. When they left the house, they left the door standing wide open, no light on in the house. There's a street light, a doorway to my house that has been off for over a year, that they cannot get fixed. I have five in the house, and my neighbor. Why do these things go on? Why do you, why does some, like I said, I've been a long-term resident. I, I cooperated with the police for years out here. I used to hunt with one of the sergeants out here. We only had four police officers on duty the night my house was broken down. Why? They were all on a chase, all four of them, on another chase. That's the reason they didn't answer the call. That brings in the safety in South Village. Why do we not have police protection? Why do we not take the street lights and things of that nature? They watch right out my front door on Oriental Avenue at 10 o'clock at night with a thin T5 in the street TV. Nobody's seen anything. You know? And like I said, I've had dealings with the Hanks family for years. And there's hard feelings, and there'll never be anything with hard feelings.
Do you have a way?
You know, South Village, like I said, I've been here, what, over 40 years? I've never seen South Village get into that deterioration that we've got into now. We're paying for water and promise that, when are we going to get it? Are, are we going to get a 10-year timeout vote? I'm dead, and I'm paying for it now. What, you know, there's, there's so much things that could be done in South Village. I, when I moved to South Village, it was half farmland yet. Half farmland. It's grown and grown and grown and grown and grown. And years ago, they had a, a group, right, which, I mean, we had cops and deputies there. Now, we're getting fluctuations here and there. Why don't we have a forceful area?
Same, I live out here. We don't like the living world, generally, that's why.
You know, I mean, we live here. We need protection, and things like that. And by not police presence, it's police watching. All the, the property will be used because of those, you know, the rules. And I'm not just used to be home. My, when my kids grow up here, I was the neighbor's father. I had kids in my house every day. We'd be playing games, we'd be doing stuff. We can't do that now. Why? Two years ago, I had kids going into my house, knocking on the windows. Oh, the police can't get in. I called them, why couldn't they leave? I called them down to their house in front of them, as we told them, we need to kill them. Why is that? All things took care of, nothing, why, what? What are you doing out here? They can't see kids, people like that. You're a person. I'm a resident. Nothing, nothing. I taught some kids in that whole town, very well. But I didn't go out and knock on people's windows and shit. Get a hold of me, I'll take you places. I'll take you running. We'll do things together. I'm not a bad guy. But don't go destroying my house. You just have fun. If you had programs out there, people that would don't help these kids, and take time with these kids, I'm, I'm ready to, I don't care. I got 10 of my kids. You know, I got four years to work, and I got all the time to work. But South Village is my down, 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 down. And there's, there's got to be a way to get back to where we were before. I mean, it's concerned parents, number one. I know it takes two people on a household work. And that, that's a given, to make a living. And, and my kids are actually providing a lot. But there's things that, that should be done, as far as, are your kids worth paying? And by my own. Plus, plus, I'm a civil American, right? There's people that can cooperate with people in the village, and it's just not being done. And it just hurts me to see my man, my mom, out on the road, that they chose to love. And I, you know, I, I was a gun dealer in South Village for years, I don't know how. I told people that, and, and the police combined, all kinds, you know? And I'm a hawk. Luckily, they only got the one gun that I had, so I didn't take it. By the way, I wasn't there at the house, and we had no power off, but I committed to no current driving. And no police, and I have five in the house around me. And that's, that's my fault. Years ago, a mayor purchased houses, and the broadcast, I mean, 30,000 people wanted to rent their house. You know, I mean, there, I had literally five in the house from that. People across the country, 80 years old, it's times have been there before I started. They need it, and. People just have to help on it. I mean, you can't depend on everybody else, you have to take action yourself. And, you know, I mean, we could talk about, we could talk about, in, in, I know history is South Village. And, and, you know, you have to take action. You can't sit back and say, oh, you know, this one, this, this one. Get involved, do it yourself.
Amateur.
Well, you, well, you may not have time to volunteer. But there's time, that you may have a few hours, someone. Help someone. Do something. You know, I mean, you may not have a certain day of the week. By the way, it's often when they turn to the fact. I don't have time to go and say, I can volunteer, you know, for eight hours here, but I can come. And to come get, they said, I don't care. You know, do some of that, and treat it. There should be some kind of a program that South Village people can help on. Not just say, oh, George is over here, but you know, I don't want that story to happen. It just, it hurts me that things of that nature, that's a great thing. Could have been fixed. Then a bunch of people at the, the house that lived right in front of it, that called South Village, oh, we can't touch it. It was kind of that call to South Village, it was kind of that South Village. Somebody needs to fix it. If there was lightning in that area, they probably would have longed up for 10, 500 TV. If there was lightning in that area, they probably would have locked up twenty-four six-five hundred TV.
Okay, let me show you how to try to address some of these concerns that you had. The first one that you said you called the police and it took twenty minutes. Does something need an alarm?
You called the police. I have an alarm.
Oh, okay, I thought you said you...
The alarm came off at ten-ten. I told them, call the police immediately, I've got them picking home. They called the police, the police left the car to ten-thirty-five at the house. Told me, said, I'll be back. When I pull up the house, the house was empty. Doors were wide open, no light on. So why didn't you security presence when you left? Did not...
Did you?
Said, I'll be back in a while. He still, the officer still back up, hour and forty-five minutes late after the call.
Did you, did you, was there a police support file?
I imagine there is.
You didn't get a copy of it?
Oh, I didn't get a copy of it.
Okay, so that's something, I mean, if you don't, there's ways that you can go back to the police department and even file agreements against that because you weren't greatly satisfied. You can as a resident file agreements. All you have to do is know the time. Sometimes we talk to the work of the dispatchers, ask that person who, you know, their name.
I called the dispatcher back, I went back home after the alarm. And the police were told to call. Said, ma'am, there's a ninety millimeter golden handgun in that house. And your officers are aware of it. I said, I don't think they'll find it, but... She said, well, we're gonna get somebody over there as soon as we can. It's already five to ten minutes after the alarm. Oh, we'll get somebody over there soon. You know?
I understand, I mean, you do have a right as a resident to file agreements against the police department, you have the police officer. So you can do that. The armed robbery, I'm sorry, didn't happen.
You're not very up to it. You have four police officers.
I haven't got, I'm trying to read the list. Can you address the, I'm just trying... I'm just trying to go down each one. The streetlights, you're not the only one. A lot of people have, over where I'm at, their lights are, you're putting on a list. And the priorities aren't, I mean, we don't have enough person there. We always need more person there, but we, you know, they are working on the streetlights. The streetlights are not owned by, who are they? We take care of the streetlights. So if someone told you to come in, unless it's on, if it's in the neighborhood, it's South Village, it's on the streets, it's on South Trail, then yes, it was in the neighborhood.
Not where it happened.
Pardon me?
Not where it happened.
Okay, then that's South Village, so therefore, someone...
Wire damage.
Pardon me?
Wire damage.
Right, and that's probably, I mean, they had a problem with that. The problem with the wire could have burnt up and they had to rewire it. And it takes, it takes a minute to do that. There's a lot of them, I don't forget, now, the infrastructure in the village is kind of... But I understand what you're saying. They shouldn't take that long, but all due fairness to the public works. They do have a lot of other things. I don't know what time of year it was, it was snow time, quite naturally, you know, they were doing that. But only thing I can keep telling you is you keep, keep calling. You know, I mean, if that's the case, if you're not getting, keep calling. You know, the squeaky as well will get the most, so I'm just telling you the truth on that one. As far as empty homes, there's nothing we can do about that. I wish we could, but our areas now, when you did make a statement about Section Eight was brought in, first of all, we cannot ask any investor if they're, if they're ready to Section Eight. We can't ask that against the law. There's no, we don't know. Right now, I couldn't tell you how many Section Eight homes in the village.
Yeah, they didn't share a limit.
Pardon me?
You had one of that.
No, sir. No. Well, they, they have, they have standards that the owner of the homes have a certificate that they get. If someone complains enough, then they can snatch that certificate from their homeowner and therefore, that homeowner is not able to rent anymore through Section Eight. Now, they may be able to get a rental. So there's only, yeah, Section Eight has their own standards, and they should be out here monitoring, especially as many that we have, as you have a person all the time, monitoring the homes. Because it's certain things are not taken care of. They'll snatch that certificate from their homeowner. And Section Eight people, they lost their home. So yes, they need, there's a responsibility there. But as far as limiting, no, that's against the law. As far as asking, an investor, we have a lot of investors now. We cannot ask them, right, you own Section Eight. We can't get this in this town. I mean, we may know before. Pardon me?
The investors not investors, even big corporations.
But we cannot, you cannot, you cannot limit, nor can you tell a person they can't rent Section Eight. You can't do that, that's the law.
But, okay, so these investors are destroying the village. They're sitting there and the light house go in bankruptcy, and then the banks are going in, the building burnt down. No one's doing anything about it. So we're saying investors are not residents.
No, what I'm saying...
They're saying they're inactive.
No, what I'm, okay, what I'm gonna say is this. We can basically put our foot down and enforce the law. Right now, we have a personal code. We need more people in that department to enforce that. Because yes, we can. We can make it hard on the investors to tell them that, you know, which we do. We do write a lot of tickets. But they're willing to pay the tickets than to do something or...
We have a court, you see, a case.
A court, what do you mean by court?
We don't want to fight cases, we're looking for matches, why would we stop laws?
There is, there is a law, like I said before. We have gone after Section Eight until Section Eight is...
There's not a section eight, talk about investors.
Same thing. We will pull their license, permit for them to rent, yes.
Yeah, but when you come out the house and they're constantly getting tickets. And there's no one in there, we have one next to us, same thing.
We, but you think it's easy to go after the banks? These banks are not that easy to go after, seriously. I mean, we tried to go after them. We have a lot of them on the books. We have a lot of people that owes us a lot of money, but they owe. We spend the money to collect money. When we started doing that, we only needed fifty cents on the dollar, maybe fifty-five cents because we got to pay the collectors. We're hoping that they pay. But as far as Section Eight is concerned, we cannot limit that. We cannot put a court on Section Eight. I mean, no municipality can do that.
Say, section eight, huh?
Well, we can, we can, we can call, we can call the Bureau and let them know that we got homes that are not compliant. We've done that too. So we can do that, and that's something that we need.
Now, you're not talking about the rest of the South Village, you're talking about how you made those investors turning down your houses in Section Eight. I think that's what you're saying.
You said, you said, you said, how can?
How can you buy all these investors to be sectionated in the houses now? Because instead of making hospitals, investors will...
That's up to the investor now. I mean, it's investor, you're saying, what you're saying, now, now, if Section, now, if you have Section Eight, no, no. There's a rule there, you know, that's...
You're saying investors, if they have a house, you got a rule about burning houses, you're not...
If they're invested, we think we go after the investors, which is the banks. Now, quite naturally, if there's an investor that just bought the house, is going to fix it up. I'm pretty sure he's going to rent it out or whatever, because he got his money involved. But if you're talking about a home that, that's... You asked, what you were saying, you asked if they, if they were to fix the house up, if they rent it out, that's up to them. That's up to the investor.
You said, we're talking about a village hall, the mayor's here, you guys all part of the village. Don't villagers have the same ordinances?
Yes, we do have...
What's your importance against these investors that are leaving the man's house just to let the people make...
We, okay.
Let me know how that works, maybe I'll talk to the angle there and see how it works.
I'm trying to tell you that there is no law against Section Eight. There is no quota of how many homes that are Section Eight. We cannot even ask an investor if there's a Section Eight home. We go after the investors, we take an entire group down, yes, we do. We need to do that more often, you're absolutely right. We need to engage with that more often, yes, ma'am, you're absolutely right. Because if we go after them and make it hard for them, maybe they'll step up to the plate or they'll lose their home, and we have done that. But...
It's gotten worse.
We have more and more and more investors in the village now. A lot of people have walked away from their homes. A lot of people have walked away from their homes. I just want to get a few other things that... As far as people getting involved, oh, I'm sorry, Lake Michigan water, I mean, it's, I stated before that right now, we have airstripers. And airstripers was mandated because of the non-chlorid that was, that was in the water. So, so now that we're actually trying to take care of the airstripers, the next step would be trying to go for Lake Michigan water, which I'll tell you, you have to, we have to get rid of our lakes. We have too many lakes in the village, too many main lakes, and we have to get rid of those before we can even think about trying to apply, because we have too many lakes in the village. So the Lake Michigan water issue is still there. It was voted on, but right now, it's taking care of the airstripers. We're getting permanent air, well, airstripers are not permanent, but we're getting, we're getting rid of the ones that we rented, we're gonna have our own that we're gonna buy. And they're gonna be permanently installed. But at the time, we get Lake Michigan water, you won't need that. But right now, it was mandated that we get the airstripers and moving towards and moving forth with our Lake Michigan water. I'm sure it's still one of the things that are... Well, it is mandated, so that's one of the things that are on the agenda to have it at some time. But right now, that's what we're doing, where we have the airstripers. And the iron-out system, we have a new iron-out system in both of our distributing places. Wells one and two, which is right down here on South Trail, and well three, right there behind, right there. So we're gonna have that. Another, another concern that the gentleman had as far as, and this is what we're here for, is help one another. I mean, I'm for that. And the reason why I got, and I became trustee is because I felt that no one could do more than I. In other words, I felt, I'm already trying to find out or trying to make things happen myself than to wait on someone else to do it for me. That's the reason why I got involved. And that's the reason why most people are getting involved. I don't want the one trying to raise my child or whatever, you, I'm trying to raise my own. I mean, I've heard a lot of times that, you know, it takes a village to raise a child. Well, okay, but if your child, you know, if, because a lot of people, you know, may not want them to talk to their children a certain way, or may not want them to engage with their child, you never know. So best thing to do is raise your own. Get involved. We need more people to get involved. And yes, we do need more activities, you're absolutely right. But like I said before, we need more volunteers to make those activities happen. And that's what this is for. You know, we can get, we can start a list on a youth council, that's great. I like that idea. I also like the idea it was talking about, that someone brought up last meeting for a community... What is it, that you have children, I'm sorry, anyone that's walking in the streets, like, community service. That would be great. Rather than, I would rather see a person go through the community service the right way than to give them a record, a ticket, fee, a grant, because now they're messed up for life. Give them a chance, I believe in that. Okay, who's there? Oh, Mr. Griff? Yes, ma'am.
Four police officers.
Oh, oh. I don't address the police officers, uh, because I don't know how you knew it was four police officers, because I don't even know how many police officers are duty at any given time.
They should be there.
Or someone told you that? Okay, oh, he did?
And I can't remember how to...
Because I don't know, I, you know, that's, and that's done rightfully so, because, you know, if you, if you know it's four police officers, you make three calls over here, you do a joint. I know we have more, we added more on the weekends. But for someone to tell you that we only had four police officers, I, like I said, I don't know. Yes?
Yeah, one thing is that, I'm not wanting to be a particular person. Well, I am a police officer. I have called the police, I've been on the police line. I hope for our experience, we deserve, we have to feel, we can't really say goodbye. I just told them how we watched drunk men, so, well, we can't do anything about it because they should go and drive, and...
The, no, I'm telling you right now, no, okay.
Okay, I have another... Another time, I downed, walked into the driveway, fired six rounds, got a three ball, seven rounds, no more shit. We go to the police, the police say, talk to him. Looked by his driveway, paid the rent, said, well, there's nothing we can do about it. We just wanted to, uh, pay advice to his driver. I mean, all the expenses, you have to look, you say, well, man, and he got his heart and drove away. Why is he, every time he called the police, they don't use the same thing over and over? They have to see it, there's nothing we can do about it.
He has a camera, he has a camera. You know, and it thinks someone was going around the neighborhood as well, it's our protection. And yet, when he say, well, we can take a picture of it, bring it to you, oh, there's nothing we can do. So why are we even dealing with it, police? Why are we dealing with it, there's nothing I can do? I have two of them on my block, on top of the lane. Two of them, we want the two administrator prior, which try problems remain, I mean, on the internet. My husband does the internet. He never responded to him. And then we watched people coming from everywhere. They go down our block, from, from handle line, wherever they come from. Cars are constantly going back and forth. We said, can't you put somebody here to watch this? We never heard no response. It goes on today. I know people that I know in the neighborhood that go to buy it. And nothing's being done. Now, I'm subjected to all kinds of people coming in my neighborhood, possibly like this gentleman, that could be robbed or killed, but that's pretty, they're gonna die for doing something. What are we supposed to do as a citizen when police have do nothing? Tell me, we have to see it. What is wrong with them? Why isn't there a relationship with our police department? The men that were like there as a pastor, I lived in twenty-eight years. I have never been so disgusted with a police department that does not work with you. Sounds like that person stuck in the dirt. Why is that not working with you?
There's a, there's a reason for that, too.
Let me, let me...
I'm tired of it.
No, no, what police officer, that, that is what you got at?
Let me, let me...
If you rob, if you rob a store, and they have a security team, they're going to use that system to arrest you. Why is it, I didn't, I didn't think about my role. I have seen people act on my camera in a top color show, that's bad, they do nothing at all. Why is it...
Okay, let me... What I was about to tell you is, when the gentleman asked a question, I answered it about, you do, you can do something. Like I said, you can make, you can make a... Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, okay, did you, did you, did you get the, did you get the police officer's name?
Yes.
And you filed a complaint? And you filed a complaint with the police department?
They entered our house and filed a complaint. They complained. We were told that you let them in. We didn't let them in, they came in. And as two LVP, when you think I'm gonna argue with the police, police can't hold us, this is a felony, if you resist. I'm gonna resist tonight, and I'm gonna shoot me as a white resistance. I did whatever they said. We filed a complaint, two prior, who was, that was a cowardly young mayor. We filed a complaint, big, long one. We had to neutralize everything.
And that, that...
That police, that police officer's got...
Three were told that I was not my age.
That police officer, he gave a citation. He was a police officer, he gave a citation. It's in my whole life paperwork. Don't tell me I got to do with the police. I have nothing to do with them. I don't trust them. They do not adore me, but terrorize us, that's like... I thought that was true. I don't see the world like I'm gonna work, so...
I'm sorry, I'm really, I am sorry to hear that. That's the first time I've heard that you didn't get any, any satisfaction.
Well, nothing wrong with this police officer, nothing.
And when you filed your complaint, they didn't even answer this, they just told you there was nothing that you do?
He was a letter straight, he didn't even find it.
No. I neighbor, our neighbor called because they were told that I had a police issue on my house. They came to my house, told me again, a search warrant, to look at my camera. They did not like the way they were pointing, and they told me I had removed, or I was going to go reveal. And they had a board for me to get into my house. I cited the complaint, I spent my rifle fighting under the concentration. For a month and a half, it went back and forth, back and forth. That's what I was, one would race me, saying my rifle, not my, I told them to leave my house at any time.
You can tell what they got, what they got.
But that, that issue, issue is, when you tell them you're speeding, they're speeding down a runway straight, this way, and you're hunting, we have to see it. Well, then who's gonna pay the overtime for a police officer to sit on my street twenty-four-seven, so he can see you?
That, they, I'm sorry, someone told you that, just like that, that you...
Every, every officer's called and told, they have to speed.
You're saying, I swear, I... This is the whole course, that's what I'm gonna tell you.
You're saying I swear everything, this is the whole course, that you're gonna help me. I swear he didn't see it. He's always watching, you're probably.
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going.
Okay. I'm not saying that, you know, that the police department is perfect, no one's perfect. This is the first I've hearing about what you're talking about, sir. You said it happened years ago? I wish I had, I mean, because now, do you get that officer still here, the chief is still here back when that happened? I mean, we, things like that. Okay, that's what I'm saying, things like that, we need to know at the time that it happened. Um, because right now, you know, they're gonna deny building, there's nothing there that's fresh. Um, you be on different type of circumstances, because this is the first time I've hearing about it. That's why you come to the board meeting, that's why you come up and you ask questions? There was a board meeting? Oh, you're talking about, okay, but I mean, but still, even after that's over with, if the chief is there, you can talk to him. After, even after the meeting, because the chief is present, you can talk to him. And then if you don't get answers, that's when you come to your, your board.
What I'm writing right now, what I'm writing right now, that's to get rid of that, and all they say is he has to see. What, and what's that gonna answer to that?
That's not gonna answer.
People speeding, no problem, keep on speeding.
Well, I mean, on due respect, it's, it's going to speeding. Did you take your license plate number?
We went with the police department, gave them a license plate number, and bring the, bring the.
Okay, guess what? Everything you're saying right now, it's, it's, people are listening to it, and I'm sure I'll have some answer, I don't know. I'll have answer, that's the next meeting for you, for that, about that, if it's not correct fact before that. So, before you leave, I just gonna get your name and phone number after, and I don't like it. And, um, I will make sure that you get some type of an answer, other than I'll wait and see what's gonna happen later. I will find out, and like I said, there's people here that are listening to that right now, but I'll make sure. If you don't get your answer, I'll make sure that you get one between now and the next, next time I'm here.
Yeah, well, first, that's what I knew, I called the police. Hey, there's three LVPs in the street, running, breaking up the town, the street, and I have priority.
Okay, well, I mean, like I said, I want, I, I mean, because that's, that is a real concern. Yeah, they're telling you all this, that's a concern, that's a big concern. Just one second. They were like, who was that? Or, who's?
My name is Berken.
Take the mic.
Yeah, I'm actually, okay. By the way, I know, on behalf of Southland Citizen Public Awareness, I think we have to move to the front. All you need to do is go out and vote. People that's in the office currently, that's people that's in the office, over there, that's have a sense of the time. They have been in there for the last fourteen years, there hasn't been no change in this village. You know, things have gotten worse. There are the police, there's a lack of presence there. That's because they don't have the money to do it. Why are we paying taxes? You are intended for paying for the chapter report, and it has gone by the district board. Why? We voted for Lake Michigan water, regardless of the money or not. You know, you get tired of it, it's like you under twenty dollars for it, you get it. Plus, you go to the market. There are no programs here for teenagers. Same thing, uh, people have been running on the year for years. Unless you change the leadership player, nothing's gonna change, this is for us. You can't walk the street, there's nothing to lose, and I'll be ready by then. You have some divisions like, uh, Carolina State, Deer Creek, and Lincoln Valley, and what's, uh, Lakeville, and Taxpayer and Bill. We don't give you services. Why are you paying the tax company? What are they on with you here? You have six trustees up there, one man. You go to a civil bill call, you can't get an answer to your question. Why? Everything is covered, what's the secret? We paying for what we wanna know. You walk up down Jeffrey? You can't run up down that street. If anything I'm saying is not true, somebody let me know. Things are not changing. Here we get one, I insisted for a new, uh, answer. We didn't go for that, but yeah, they gave five hundred dollars, they remember what we had to do first, for, for, why? That's not what we voted for. They said, please, I talked pain personally myself. He said that sixteen, he looked in the face, wait, what happened to the money? And every time you guys pay that, you want to be, they deserve everything else. That's why we want to save state bills now. You pay for water, then you expect to be free water. Why can't you pay? I asked all of you to join the Southland Citizen Public Awareness, and, and, you know, bring, uh, attention to these things. You guys need to go to the talk. Well, I mean, you three minutes, you have to, you know, you have to make yourself known, you know, make myself known. But I, you know, I just wanna say, you know, unless you change the leadership that's there, nothing's gonna happen. The same people have been in there for the last fourteen years and have seen nothing done, and it's wanting, 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 it was. Unless you do something. Now, when we meet, I'll give you a special prize, you know. But I, I'm asking, your last fourteen years, you have to change the leadership you're in. You know? I think, I'll give everybody, president? Okay, um, we meet, next meeting is September thirteen, I have to give you, uh, a location, because we are not allowed to be to the community center. Even though we are community group. And our only, our only objective is to let people know what's going on in the village. I thought the community center was for community groups. Apparently, we are not a community group, but all of them are in the village. We have seniors today on every other Friday.
What was the reason given for not being able to use the community center?
I'm sorry, what?
What reason were you given for not being able to use the community center?
What reason was I given?
Yeah, they had to give you some reason, right?
I'm still waiting on the answer. I'm not, I'm hoping I'm rounding you guys up, because you need to get out and vote. The people that's been in office have been there for the last fourteen years, there's nothing changed. They wouldn't change that you pay for tablet anymore. Now, how can the workers feed your family off that? They have told, and I understand, that we sound like five police officers. Where are police officers at? You know, that's, that's being for real. Everything I said, to the end, the biggest thing is, we don't know what money's going. We pay taxes every day, we pay big taxes. What is, what, what does the service have been for you now? Nobody know. Kids walk the street, just bow out here, the food services, bad water, bad house. What are you guys gonna do? Just sit there, just listen to my music, okay? We need, we need help out here. And then, why don't we get them on stage, the police from here? I bet you everybody's voting for them now.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
My name is Nathan Berken, I'm president of the SBC team. But my main, my main purpose is trying to wake up the people. One of the main things is I'm fairly proud to see the group here tonight. This is what we need at the city hall. Other words, at the board. We have a lot of brilliant ideas right here, brilliant ideas. Got good ideas. But when it comes on that Tuesday, we have the same people be at the meeting. I'm glad to see what we got here, I believe you're on a brilliant diet. But this is what we got, this is the only way we gonna get things done. We have to come to the meeting, ask questions, come and force, let people know that you are about something. You can't just sit down and criticize, and don't know what's going on. If I don't like the mayor, if I don't like the trustee, am I gonna come back and give you a good report? Come and see for yourself, hear for yourself, then you really can decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so that someone knows, if you are willing to go to the extent of getting a license plate number, or turning it into a police, just understand, when you do that, you have to be willing to sign a complaint.
We always have a complaint.
Then if you sign a complaint, you will get a notice of report. Have you gone to court yet?
We've gone.
I wasn't at the court.
Baby, you know, you don't understand, don't. I know, I seen it. I wanna sign a complaint. You can't do that. We have to hear. This is what we do. I'll sign a complaint against somebody, and they'll, they'll, I have to. Does it change the neighborhood? But I'm not allowed that, because they tell me I cannot do it.
That's, that's what I was saying, this is the first I've heard of it, and I said, stated before. I personally was found out, because first of all, yes, you, when you sign a complaint, you're supposed to have a hearing. And you were not given a hearing, I don't understand that.
I have filed a complaint, it's gone to the court in Marco. The sad part, it gets to the margin of court, they either extend it for three or four months, or they dismiss and complete them. You have to be able and willing to sign that complaint. Once you sign that complaint, then that has to tar you on your back.
They're supposed to do something. Actually, they're supposed to do something, if you, that's what I'm saying, you're supposed to have some type of decision. Like I said, I'll find out, and I, at the end of the meeting, I won't get all the particulars. Yes, sir.
Hi, so let me, first of all, hi, so let me know we, uh, just be a police officer out in town. And, um, I think that, definitely, when it comes down to what you were talking about with regards to the speeding, you have to understand how the Illinois legal code works. If you make the complaints, and if you say that someone is speeding, pursuant to chapter six twenty-five, Illinois statute act five, which is the Illinois legal code, someone has to actually witness that and be able to state that a certain statutory limit being decided to twenty miles an hour, that a vehicle was traveling above that speed limit, and they were able to attest as to that speed limit with an actual speed control device, otherwise a fresh out of law school attorney would come in and make a strike at that. I, I understand, I understand.
I didn't question, I didn't question in the right, in Burberry. For the speed, they get in my yard, put a camera in my house, I don't care if you stop your car, nothing that can be done.
I'm not, I'm not saying that you're wrong. What I'm saying is, is I was just addressing the legality portion of that. With regard to whether or not you have a lot of police service and things like that, I have to say that it's Chicago with its high alarming homicide rate can't even control itself, and it has the numbers to be able to do that. You have to understand that a lot of times when we sit there and say, if you want the politicians to do something, it's not all on the politicians, it takes a community effort. A lot of times, we use representatives to democracy, which is pretty much the foundation of our country. We yield to the politicians to take care of their everyday problems that go on in society, and we negate the fact that we have a responsibility in that too. And I can tell you, because I've responded to a large number of burglars in my eight years as being a police officer. And the thing is, is this, a lot of times, citizens become victims of their own demise, or of their own situations. Let me explain. They need garage door openers, they need back doors openers. They don't take into consideration that you're dealing with a type of criminal element that takes your weaknesses and exploits them to break into your house. You don't get a safe for your firearms, you don't protect your assets. We have a suburbia mentality when dealing with the city element, and you are being exploited instead of recognizing that back when you were children, your children used to be able to walk and play in the streets. You used to be able to leave your picturesque windows open for people to be able to see inside of your beautiful homes. That is not the case anymore. That is not the case anymore. And if you're gonna stand here and be a part of the village, then you have to understand that an element that unfortunately, nothing can be done to stop coming in, then you have to guard yourself against it. That's what I'm saying.
That's your responsibility, when there's four, five, five, and then ten thousand, what he's talking about right here is not being, being my garage door openers. Because you're checking them, it seems like you're checking them.
I'm sorry, I'm not that.
That's just, but you're checking us, for several reasons, you should say, be careful, make sure you watch yourself. I'm not saying it's your fault, that these people are speeding down the street.
I apologize. But I know, I understand what you're saying, but that's not my intent. So, I, I have no problem, I have no problem apologizing, that's how it proceed, that's totally not my intent. Again, I apologize, I can only apologize as many times as you can say that I'm not a officer. That's not my intent. What I'm saying is this, we all should take active steps in policing ourselves, just like in, using the same argument, you can't expect the government to police your children. You have to police your children. And so, if you have to police your children, you have to also take care of the things that could perhaps make you a victim. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that you need to do what you're supposed to do. Now, with regards to the four, with regards to the four cops, okay? You have to understand this, I think that one thing that needs to happen in the village is that there needs to be a citizens' police academy. And there needs to be, if you guys, and they're used to, right, if you guys can walk a line in our shoes. I'm not saying that they are always on the job, you understand, they, they make mistakes. But what I'm saying is, if you can understand that within your sector of influence, or your, your area that you live in, what you may see is a common problem that's occurring, but maybe at that particular time, a homicide occurred on Soft, on Soft Trail. Something else occurred down here. There may have been an officer getting shot and killed in Fort Heights, and sometime that blue brotherhood, so to speak, they rushed to his aid. So, the minimum, and that's what I'm saying too, it's often, see, law enforcement, what makes, what makes criminal, what makes the criminal element survive is the fact that they have more money than the government. That's what it is. The criminal, and I can, we two have studied this in college and everything, they have more money than the government. Law enforcement is only as strong as the bureaucratic funds that support it. If there are no funds, it cannot work. And unless you have officers that are willing to say, hey, you know what? I don't care about being paid. I'm gonna come in because they're the problem, we have to attack. If you get paid, that's fine, but oftentimes, it's not the case. It's not the case of what it used to be back years ago, when officers used to volunteer, they didn't care about getting paid. Now, unfortunately, it's about money. Last thing is, people have to eat, but understand this, you have real concerns. You all have real concerns. I'm not saying the police are right, I'm not saying they're wrong. I'm not saying you're right, I'm not saying you're wrong. What I'm saying is, it's a real effort. That's what I'm saying.
We'll talk all day. But, um, no, go ahead, sir.
I'll say, just say, just for a take one.
Yes, sir.
Five years ago, I called the police. They hung my, I said, I'm with them, I tell them what the problem is. And I tell them I wanna sign a complaint. Fine, not a problem. I've gone to market, I've, I've gone. Right up here, but what I'm saying is, now, is, I don't know what happens as far as the police department. But here's the fact, I just signed a complaint, if I seen something, I'm going on the interview. Now, perfect example, I call, you come to my room. I say, there's a guy riding ATV on the street. I go exactly, where is this dude? And I got it on camera. Wow, there's nothing we can do, we have to see. Now, go you right away, I think.
Well, I can tell you that if I, when the officer that responded, I have citizens in this audience that can attest to that, I would have responded, he would have got arrested. So, what I can tell you is this, the policy of the police department, in particular, work ethic of the individual officer, is what varies.
That's what I told you that I wanted to personally find out because I was first time on the air. Who? Y'all wanna come to the mic? Young man, come on. Come on. Everybody, come on, come on. That's what this is for. Don't be shy. Just let it go. Let it out. Let it out. Let it go. Don't be shy. Just speak your mind. Don't worry about, uh, with that hidden criticism here to... That's okay. Bishop, your first time speaking. Great. Go ahead.
I'm not really up here to talk about, you know, I'm just really up here to say, like, the violence and everything. I'm not gonna say I'm not an angel, you know what I'm saying, but... I'm not gonna say like, I'm not gonna go like that, like I'm an angel or something like that.
Prior to we, like, moving out there, I'm not gonna say I was a good kid, you know? But I didn't do some of the things kids do now, like, I don't do home invasions, you know? I haven't shot nobody.
You don't like the buttons?
Yeah, I don't like the buttons.
So, so do you have any suggestions?
Put the guns down. I look at it like, instead of like using a gun, why not pick up a basketball or open a book, you know what I'm saying? As long as I can remember, like, I've always been positive. I did line jobs, cut breasts, or littering them to somebody in my family. Just try something different. She moved me from an environment where if I would have stayed out there, the streets probably would have had me. Um, I have younger siblings. And now that I'm in South Village, I work for them. Because I don't have nobody to introduce them to nothing to get them in trouble. Um, this really is a lot of people.
No, I mean, because you, you put the message out there. You see it right so far.
So this is not viral?
But no, you're saying something probably. You're telling people of your age who are telling you that the arterial means to an end of the guy. No, you're looking, no. And that's what you're trying to say, go ahead. Yes, I don't know. Because all streets have guns. Believe me, now, more than that, people don't think you know that. Well, that's right. Well, listen, that you, that you see that you didn't like our...
I'm sorry. I can't do this. Thank you, thank you very much.
I just want to say, young man, young man, young man, I just want to say to you, I just want to say this. We have to start with you. When it gets to our, you know, to our age, our generation, we, you know, it's too late then. We have to start with you. I'm looking at you now within how you dress. See, a lot of people are looking at, you know, they wear a certain garb or whatever. See, you're still a young man. You're eighteen years old, but your pants aren't down. Okay, so you got a young, that's a fashion statement. Your pants down to the ground is not a fashion statement. That's just dumb. Perception is eighty percent. If you go somewhere, you know, you can be a scholar. But if someone looks at you and they look at how you dress or whatever, they're gonna perceive you to be a certain way and you're gonna get people that's gonna step out to like, they're gonna be apprehensive of you. Learn that. Know that in life. Like I said, you dress like a person that has someone in your life. A lot of those don't be lucky, be grateful that you have someone in your life. That's why we have a lot of problems right now because there are not enough people and the youth today to like to make sure they don't go down there. That's what I'm saying. And I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to see. This is what this is about. Brenda, my name is Kevin. And we represent the youth of your future. You seeing what you're seeing? You seeing what you're looking forward to? Positivity. You seeing what you're looking forward to? Goodness. I'm telling you. He's like, so what's your name? My name's Aaron. Hello, Aaron. And we are your future. And there is nowhere near being the bleakness that you think that is happening. Is nowhere near being that. There's a positive, strong, intelligent future ahead of you. And don't you think for a second because of a few neanderthals and bad children that act up, that we're gonna let that happen. Where are you? Can we give a hand for our youth here? So, uh, like I did last time, I'd like all of you to stand up. All of you guys, come on. Anybody who's in age eight, seven? You. Yeah, stand up. All of you. All of you, all of you guys, stand up. Now, if you came to this first meeting, you know that, um, there was only maybe two or three of us here? If we weren't getting better as a community, this is what we need. We need participation. Now, I'm gonna tell you some things that I saw today on the internet. Yeah, what happened today was pretty bad. But another thing that really disgusted me is when I saw the comments under Facebook. I saw a lot of things like, you know, see, this is why I got out of South Village. Or this is why I'm leaving. Or, you know, things like that. And personally, that disgusted me. Reason why I always feel like somebody like to get out of a dangerous situation. But when you do that, you divide the community. When you divide the community, things go down. Basically, what I'm saying is, we've said it a lot already, we gotta come together. And it's gonna start with our youth. So all of you guys, you know, you may know some friends or maybe some, you know, wild kids or things like that. They're your friends, you know? Just tell them what's cool and what's not cool, you know? You don't need to be out in the streets or whatever, you know? You can still have fun doing other things. I'm telling you. You don't need to, you don't need the streets to fit in. I mean, that's basically all I want to say is to my youth, you know, just stay positive. You know, there's better things when you're out there. No matter what your situation may be, just stay positive. Uh, I can't say I've had the worst of life. I'm not gonna lie to you and say I have. But even when things did get bad for me, you know, like in high school, I went to a pretty tough high school. I stayed positive. And I think I'm on a good path. I appreciate a lot of other guys on a good path. But what I want you guys to do now, when we go home, next time we have this meeting, bring your friends up here. Get involved. We gotta come together as a community if we want to progress. Otherwise, what we see now is all gonna get worse. Thank you.
I might have to, Mike, can you ever put your name in? First of all, I just want to say, what a great job you spring out of this city. And I think this is really welcome to me. We need to come together as a community. It's nice to see people behind the sun when they can breathe. But there's two things I wanted to break up, just so that we have clarification. Because I think that disinformation or lack of disinformation is just as bad as misinformation. For example, no water supply issue. But for those of you who might have noticed in the beginning, that when the referendum was passed, regarding Lake Michigan water, we were whether or not we should pursue Lake Michigan water. At that time, the IDPA put a mandate out, a trusty urban state. They mandated exactly how people were gonna handle Lake Michigan water, whether or not we got it. They forced Lake South Village to put airstripers in. We were pursuing Lake Michigan water when they said that you're not working fast enough. Your residents need safe water. So because you're not working fast enough, we're going to drop our airstripers on you to give you and make you work with them. Now, in the meantime, we have had two water increases. The first water increase was because we were running our water department deficit. So the first water increase was to catch up. The second water increase was to be able to start working towards paying off a 4.8 million dollar loan that the IDPA wanted us to put in place to correct our system. Our system has issues, there's no doubt about it. We haven't had well free online since 2009. Well, I think the mayor would be happy to tell you, well, three's coming back online, probably within the next couple of weeks. That's a major accomplishment, people. Well, three was down since 2009. That means we had no water well. Okay, our bad was good action. It's coming back online. That's an accomplishment. And yeah, taking the 4.8 million dollar loan to do that. And in this paper that I'm looking at says the funding went to temporary airstripers. Actually, temporary airstripers are now being replaced by permanent airstripers. Because we need that to secure our water system. They will be permanent airstripers. And next I'd like to say, people said, where's your money? You don't know where our money's going. So I'm in South Village, I'm saying, www.southvillage.com. I don't know if many of you know this, but your minutes, your ordinances, your resolutions, your audits, your budgets, and your accounts payable are at the South Village website from 2009 to present. So if you really want to know what's happening in your village, I suggest going to the website. And as far as programs, we South Village has a certain line. Trusty Poskin works very hard. He would appreciate every single one of you. He tried to get a basketball program together three times. He had to change his schedule three times because he didn't have kids to participate. He tried to get baseball the last two years. He couldn't get parents to come on coach. We need participation. We need money. But you know what? You can do a lot of things with no money if you've got people to come out and work. And this is encouraging. I mean, I've met a lot of people tonight. I don't know your name, but I remember you. I don't know a lot of you. I want to know more about you. But what I'm saying is we do need to come together as a community. And if you want to know what's going on in South Village, Facebook's not the place to go. Your South Village website is the place to go. WWW.SouthVillage.com. If you go to the website, you will see there's a place to subscribe to the South Village email list. And the email list go out to tell you about programs that are happening in South Village. So finally, what I'd like to say is, this is a great group. Thank you very much for coming out. United with Stan, divided and fallen, as I believe was Aaron had just said, let's work together, let's staff by each other. How much of the 4.8 million dollars, we're still in process of working out the repairs. It's gonna take less than a year to get all the repairs done with 4.8 million dollars. So we're still in process of... No, the 4.8 million dollar loan is being used exclusively for the iron rehole system and bringing well free back online and getting your current system, permanent airstripers. No, 4.8, 4.8 million dollars is being used for this work that the IDPA mandated according to consent order, which is also why you have to... You've got the mayor back there, you've got a trustee right there. I'm not gonna speak on that. What I'm saying is, is I'm like...
Okay, okay. We've been like, okay, we've been going to try to keep going. No, I'm trying, y'all are going back and forth. She said she can't answer that one, so that's... No, um, first of all, you said you had someone that moved in two weeks ago? Two months ago. Would that house vacant for a while? Okay, there should have been, pardon me? Okay, two things could have happened. Number one, water probably could have been on the whole time and never... Okay, that, okay, that, that's something that, and I can understand, she may have a toilet running. They had everything checked out? Then they should have came? Okay, well, that, okay, so... So you said that we have never been checked in, basically, which is how, okay. Okay, well, then we need, I need that information tonight to, what address that is. Uh, you can let me know. I'll personally take care of that too. I mean, because that shouldn't, they told you, this is the second time they told you, they should have came out the first time. No, no, I mean, the tape, you got it true. I mean, this is, you voice your opinion, it's over for everyone. Like, the only thing I didn't want and I didn't want to have is named all the talking about individuals. Well, and this is, this is my, this is my first time hearing about it. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna dig out and find out what's going on with that because it shouldn't be that way. Yes, sir. Yes.
My name is Paulie Cobb. I'm a 1868 miker from a dress. Give you my addresses. I have nothing to hide. I'm here tonight because I want you to know I'm a police officer. Fortunately, I worked for South Village, but I live here. Last Wednesday, my residents were burglarized. Let me explain to you what happened. Before I did that, let me tell you, I've been a police officer for 21 years. So I'm not even a gang. My residents were burglarized. What they did was they unscrewed... My residents were burglarized, what they did was they unscrewed all of my exterior lights, make it completely dark. They then took a landscaping brick, and they threw it through my patio for a window. The brick didn't go through on the first try, it bounced off, landed on my porch. I have a raised ranch, my patio is on the second floor of the house, my porch is high. I thought I was safe, everything's visible, my neighbors could see what's going on. So the brick fell off, landed on my porch, made a huge dent in the porch, the brick weighs about twenty-five pounds. On the second effort, they threw it through a cliff, I think that's a cliff, landed in my living room, my kitchen. They then went in my house and ransacked everything. Tape, there was a piece of jewelry, a five hundred dollar bill that was given to me by my mother, a shotgun that was given to me by my father, and then just, just laying his neighbor. They also bought a piece of my house, represent pieces of my house. The thing I'm also upset about, those items were being replaced. I'm not worried about that, they're gone. What I'm upset about is, there's a fire in this alley on the street, that's gonna be used to hurt someone. I'm also upset, because I live on a nice neighborhood, I'm the guy that cuts everyone's grass if they can't do it, or snow blows the driveways with my snow blower when they can't do it. I don't mess with anyone, they come and I go. None of my neighbors saw anything. You tell me a twenty-five pound rock landed twice, and you didn't hear anything? Our houses aren't far apart from each other. So the reason I'm here tonight is to tell you, open your eyes, make a difference, don't be afraid. Stand up for one another. When you see something wrong, and you know wrong from right, because we're all adults, report it, step up, make a difference, don't hide your shadow. I remember growing up, I came to Saw Village in nineteen seventy-eight, and I remember, if I did wrong, I got punished. If I got punished, it was either from the police, my parents, or my parents' friends, who saw me or caught me doing where I was going wrong. There's a couple of people that I know in the audience here that were involved in my childhood, and they know, and they caught me doing wrong, I was gonna pay. Stand up, if you see right and wrong, stand up. I'm here with the best police department, I'm a fellow officer. They are busy, I understand that. There's no money to hire new officers, there's no money to hire or obtain new equipment. Things are running down, I understand that, and I know how the game works. But we have to help them to help us. So when you see a crime occurring, be willing to step up. It's gonna take a while to go to court, it is, unfortunately, that's the judicial system, okay? It's not gonna be resolved overnight. Times have changed, there's more attorneys than ever right now, okay? They're gonna drag it up because they want the money. Go to court, protect your neighborhood, protect your property, protect your community. You know what? I'm the guy that, that left the door open at night when I went to bed. I just did it a week ago. Now every day I come home, and I'm wondering if I'm gonna have a problem in the house. I understand it really deserves a lot. This makes a difference right here. Talk to your neighbors, stand up for one another. If there's anything that I can do, I live in eighteen sixty-eight, like, come by. If I can help with anything, I will help. I hope I, uh, I hope I reach some people, and I hope you understand this, David.
Thank you, sir, this is good, that was a lot, absolutely. Absolutely, we do have to help one another. Um, I know it's getting close to the time, is anyone? Yes, sir.
I've been here for like six years, me and my wife and kids are living here, and I hear all this stuff about the programs and they need jobs, and to me, dog comes out of the pantry. I mean, you can put the programs in, examine the kids and... We went to Chicago High School, my daughter played baseball last year, and I had her here to coach. She had kids that went to her school, they would show us like the first two games, they stopped coming, I seen one at the school, a half of us, their moms said, "Stop taking it." And I was done, and I got approached, I think it was last year, here in Saw Village, about helping coach. It said four kids, son, four kids. It just comes back to the parents, you play the mayor, wherever you want, it ain't a problem. It's the parents bringing up these kids, these kids having kids. Nervous of it, y'all trying to fart, but their kids are out running the street, and study in the... And, I mean, I've seen, I, I've worked with Michigan, and when I moved out here, I thought it was like nice supper shop, and the first couple of years, it wasn't. I mean, you just, you get to the street, it get dark out, there was nobody outside, I heard a lot of curvy, I'm like, wow. I moved from Michigan on a fad to a nice day, but now, I went to the gym last night, it's eleven thirty last night, coming up torn. There's like twelve thirteen old kids walking down the sidewalk. I mean, look to the corner, my wow, we need a couple more kids, but it's eleven thirty at night. I go to the gym, I come home at eleven, eleven thirty at night. And every time I come on tour, or go up South Trail, I'm seeing kids walking across the street, where the parents? And then, the walk in the street is ridiculous, like my wife said. The boys get out the way, sometimes the girl, they might just sit there and stop, without making a shit of it. Just yesterday, we determined the corners, and a cop was coming, two girls walking in the street. Soon as the cop came on the street, they jumped up to the side. Soon as he turned left, and we went right, we look back, girl stepped right back in the street, kind of like...
They still walk in the street, the cops still don't do nothing. So right underneath their faces.
They need to make the hair, because if you make the hair, then they may look with their foot down, and take care of the kids. Could I say that, I'm lucky in our neighborhood, but our whole act is lost without them. And we noticed when other kids, when the neighbors come down, and they're looking in the garage and stuff, okay, I see you.
I'm the crazy lady on the street, I don't care. You come home after school, you gonna break the glass? I got dustpan in the room, go sweep it up, right now. Otherwise, I'm gonna follow you home, and I'm gonna give your mom the bill for my flat type.
But if you do that, you know what, their parents always pick up and they think the kids are angels.
Yep.
We had last year, this kid went across the street for Beth, she used to work for the, uh, the downtown here. They were throwing rocks at her house, the city put a big lump of crap in the backyard. She went around by the kids, and they didn't hear nothing about it, that's number my kid. They didn't hear nothing about it, they're all angels.
Yep.
Every time this kid's getting arrested, the parents try to give you some, "Oh, my kid was gonna go find a job, oh, there is news tomorrow." It's all the same today, they're gonna do some rock. But, what's, you know, what's the parent with the foot down?
Thank you so much, thank you very much. Is anyone else, anyone else? Okay, there's a couple of things I want to try to do some housekeeping. First of all, I, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody that came out tonight. Took the time out to, uh, come out and visit with your neighbors, visit, yes, ma'am? No, I'm not. Yes, I know what you're talking about. But, okay, I, I... I just wanted, I just wanted to, to, I don't know, maybe it was, at the time, first of all, you said that all the, all the other, um, communities came out of help, that's mutual aid. Anytime someone, anytime someone encounters a problem, that's the first thing they do. They don't, they don't wanna take a chance, and wait five, six minutes, they make that phone call right. If they tried to do something, doesn't want, they make that phone call right away to regulate, which was a good fact. Now, we, I understand that the hydrants do work, maybe at the time, they tried to open it, or they couldn't get that one open, and then that's... But now, now I understand, they all work except for one. Now, that well has nothing to do with that. But now, who told you that? The letter, someone, I, I wanna... Wait a minute, you said, you have a letter that states that those wells, I'm sorry, that those fire hydrants weren't working because that well is not open? I wanna see that letter. Because I, I, because the water leaks in the village, I mean, if you got, if you got an area that's out, you can tell me, I mean, you have a well that's out, how are you gonna do that? But, I mean, I never, because if that's the case, then you don't, if the fire hydrant isn't working, then you're, you know, if you're not getting that well, it, uh, feeds that fire, and it also feeds your house. Okay, so then that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm trying to say, if not, I won't be able to do that, if I agree this way. Yeah?
These fire hydrants fall all the same, no matter where you go.
Okay.
Or two significantly, which you would send it.
Yeah.
They would be, that their wrench wasn't the correct one.
The wrench.
And they opened up these other fire hydrants in all these years, if it wasn't the right one.
That's not, now, that's a good question, that's a good question.
The second thing is, we have not seen those fire hydrants twice, for years.
That's another good question.
They're flooding the fire hydrant. Unfortunately, why are you doing that, when we were in the last town, you do that?
Squeaky will.
Everybody's looking at the basis, being trained for this one? We doing that one in Washington, we wanting to, we don't respect the rest.
Like I said, like I said before, squeaky will, you been, and this is what you have to do with the village. You have to come up there, you have to let them know that you're not being heard, and that's what your job is. You come out there and you let them know. You let them know that's why we here tonight, I'm sure, like I said before at the beginning, their ears here, and they hear what you're talking about. You better believe, between now and the next meeting, there's gonna be something to be said about it, it's gonna be something that's happening, but it started here, which is good. Okay, let me, let me explain something, too. And I heard people say that all the time. And I'm just gonna say, I know the mayor's here, I'm here, I'm just gonna tell you this. If you have a question for a particular department, that department head is on the agenda. I don't see anything else. That department head's name is on the agenda. We have a particular question for that department, you can ask that particular question. Now, if it's something else that's not on the agenda, had nothing to do with that, say, if this is, um, you and your neighbor having an argument, then that's different. That's different, because there's nothing there for that. But if you have a question for the fire department, that's why, that's why we bring him out. Ask the question. He's a, he's a department head, he is on the agenda, that says agenda items only. If the police chief is there, now, he may tell you that I wanna, you know, expect to go all over, I'll talk to you after the meeting, but guess what, you got attention. So that's what, I don't want you to come out to me just, you know, but I can't ask a question. If it's on the agenda, you can ask that question. Now, you may not be able to get the long answer, but you will get answered at the end of that meeting. You may not wanna hold it up, but if that department is on that meeting, I mean, on that agenda, that's an agenda item. Okay, but these were all due, all due fairness, I mean, I don't think I gave them around about answers, I did try to answer their question. As far as how many hydrants are not working, and which ones aren't working or are working, and you did break up a valid point. If we're, if we got money from a grant to fix the, to fix the water, that's part of the water. I mean, that is, that's part of the water, and, uh, God forbid, and I think the news is gone, the news media doesn't need to know that we only have, because, guess what? They find out that you have no fire hydrants working in your area, your homeowners' shares will go up. So you don't wanna know, so that's another thing that we try... But I'm just saying, that's another thing that we, uh, you know, that needs to be done, that... What, okay, but what do I tell, just like you telling this lady here, what do I tell you? You go in there, you, then you come to the meeting, and put it on the record.
No, I haven't.
Okay, when you come to the meeting, put it on the record, and then, I'm sure, I'm sure, enough people show...
Nobody knows what's the money yet, your house gonna be called on fire.
But, um, I just, okay. I was trying to finish up, because we got somebody with overtime in here, go ahead.
Check with the chief, if you don't like the chief, when you take the chief about, right? The mayor's got five people on his side. He's throwing that out. He got at least five on his side, whatever he say, he's the strong man, I love me that. So if you got something that you don't like about cities, don't complain to the police office. So if you got something that you don't like, and I'm still, don't play for the four Ds, I'm, don't play for the mayor.
No, sir.
He got the power, he's down for the mayor, he's out, he's a police. He's got the power to do it. This guy, the mayor's got the power, he should have received, if he don't like the chief. If the chief, I don't know who, boy, that you, that's the problem, you, if you talk to the chief, he might have been the mayor.
Anyway, we, no, we didn't, okay, let me just sit back on track. Uh, I do have a couple of questions I wanna ask the people that are still up here. I know that we kinda went off a little on track, and I was hoping that, you know, we, we did have the youth come out, we did have them let you know, and, uh, it was a lot of good questions tonight. Like I told that couple there, uh, their family, that we're gonna try, I am going to, uh, look into it. And, um, a lot of other concerns that were brought up tonight, believe me, they were written down, and they were actually, uh, they're not gonna go on deaf ears, and if they don't, continue to ask. Continue to go, keep going back, back, back to get an answer. That's all I can tell you, because that's the way, that's the way it works. Um, I guess Dr. Lee.
Can you please, well, I didn't try to poke out, I just wanted to bring this to the table.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is your place.
One of the, the things that we had earlier this evening is, I actually had kickoff for, we are setting up a series of advisory councils for the school district one sixty-eight. And what we were looking for is, a lot of you all had great ideas, and you said, I want to volunteer, I want to help. So what we are actually setting up is a community advisory council for our district to actually specifically help do some of the activities, but structure it through our school district. So, for example, a week from Tuesday, we're having our back-to-school bash, it's one-year party, that we are actually giving volunteers to help us donate hot dogs and hamburgers, and a bouncy house, and a pizza, to give our kids something to do from four-thirty to six-thirty, that's fun activity, that's structured. And so those are the kinds of activities that we're trying to do, but we need more support from the community to actually look at what, what, what are we trying to do for our children? And, and maybe we've got seniors who say, I could spend an hour twice a week leading to preschoolers. So we need you here. So what I'm asking is, before you leave tonight, if you're willing to work with us, and I know that our pastor and his wife are signed up to participate, if you're willing to just give us either some time, some energy, or your calls, or email, I just, I just need your information. Because we're going to structure what, what, like, often this around. If you would just sign them, put your name on them, we're willing to help, you will get communication from us about when we're meeting, how we're trying to get together, what we're asking your assistance to do with our community advisory council. We wanna provide an action step here in our district. So opening up doors here, we're trying to provide action step here.
Thank you, Dr. Uh, Jack.
Does it matter if we don't live here? Can we help you if we don't live here?
We, all hands on deck.
Okay, I do need your help.
So that's why I'm sending this around, all hands on deck.
Okay, uh, quickly before, uh, I do have a few questions. First of all, I'd like for you guys to give yourself a half of, uh, roundly handle it. Applause, for coming out. Okay, um, by show of hands, how many people do you, um, do they, do you feel that this was very helpful for having this town hall meeting? How do people feel it was helpful? Okay, uh, would you like to, I would, because I'm gonna do this for the people. Uh, I was looking at September twenty-fourth, because we have a lot of things going on in there. Beginning of probably September, people trying to get things ready for school, and school's already started. So I'm looking to have it the third Wednesday at, um, seven, eight-thirty, I'm gonna talk to Dr. Lee again. We'll have it here, I'll get the flyers out, um, hopefully we'll have a, um, a big, a bigger turnout, because I'm hoping that everyone comes out and bring their neighbors. Also, this is something that you may want to look at very closely, so I'm gonna take my time in saying this. September eleventh, I'm having a tax appeal seminar at Village Hall from six to eight P.M. You're going to get a tax appeal statement in the mail, right after September fifth, you have thirty days to appeal your taxes. Um, Blue Township and Cook County Assessors Office will be there to help you file your appeal. You need to bring your tax bill, the appeal notice that it will be in your name with your address that are coming to the mail, and if, if you have a recent appraisal of your property. If your property was recently appraised, bring that along with you, because that, that helps you out. That begins September eleven from six to eight at Village Hall. So if that's something, I will have flyers out, need to let your neighbors know, uh, those that have the, the taxes. Second thing, senior citizens freeze. I don't know who qualifies, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know who has it one right now, but if you have a senior citizen freeze, you need to, uh, apply for a tax appeal. You don't wanna do that because it may, that's up to your senior citizen freeze. So you may not wanna do that, but those that don't have it, I would suggest every person that owns a home that pays the tax bill, apply for a tax appeal. Because your property was assessed kinda high for a while, and, uh, even though they're gonna bring it down some, it may not be enough because there are a lot of foreclosures, and, um, a lot of property was resold, and a lot of people walked away. That brings your property value down. So that's something that we need to do. And also, last but not least, um, this is, I, I did speak about it at the beginning, but even more so than now, we need to come together as a village. I personally am sick and tired of this village being in the news for something negative. Everyone says, how do we get people out here to do business out here? How can you get people, if you notice, I didn't even know the news media was coming here, I have no idea, I don't even know why they happened filter over here, I know they were over there where the incident happened, but I don't even, I don't even know why they were here and for what reason. That's why I was trying to keep it as positive, because if you're gonna bring people, if you're gonna bring businesses out here, you have to sell something. And always sell it, because this, it is a shame, every time Soft Village is in the news, it's because of something negative. Then you wanna find out why we cannot bring businesses out here. They want your money, but they'll go down the street, they can go and stay here, open up something, get your dollar. They can go down to Linnwood, they can go down to Creek, they still get your dollar. We're getting predatory, um, businesses, businesses that here today don't tomorrow. But meaningful businesses are not gonna spend millions of dollars into a neighborhood where they see crime. They know right where they got, they got to spend money else here. Soft Village is not as bad as they seem, or people make it seem, I've been out here thirty-two years. And it's not as bad as that, the crime is just recently, but that happens everywhere because it's warm outside, people have, you know, it's, even if you have fifty programs, but the part I don't like, every community has crime, but you don't hear about it. Every community has drug problems, but you don't hear about it. What you hear about it here all the time, because they like to pick on Soft Village. Four Heights, how many last times someone saw Four Heights in the news? About anything negative, it's not there. There's drug problems in Olympia Field, Flossmore, Massing, there's big drug problems there. There's killings and shooting everywhere, they're not gonna sell guns in Soft Village. Guns are sold everywhere, but it's always, it's the news here. And that stops us from getting the business, that we, we always ask questions, why can't we get businesses out here? Because we got to stay out of the news. It's, it's unfortunate, and sales papers, I'm not looking at sales papers, I'm, you know, I've been invested out here for, for thirty-two years. And I'm sure that one of the ladies here, there's many of you longer than that, they didn't move out here for that. I can't talk, ask you about how to take care of your kids, but I'm just giving you the numbers of what's going on. If you own a home out here, if you've been out here any length of time, get involved. Together, we can make a difference. It's easy to point a finger, it's easy to tell somebody what they're not doing. We need to start with ourselves, and say, what can we do to make Soft Village better? Thank you very much for coming out and having a great evening.